The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering and Alderman June Karen will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Alderman Willscher, you didn't read the lead in.
Sorry?
Meeting extemporaneously?
I'm getting there, Alderman Dowd.
Okay.
It's not next on the agenda. Okay, as President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to this state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the Agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 811-6856-5211. The passcode is 896485. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashua's website at NashuaNH.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Nashua Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Now let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present, I can hear the proceedings and I'm home alone.
Alderman Cleaver.
I am here, I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderwoman Kelly won't be joining us this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I can hear everyone, I am present and I'm practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's rule.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I'm here. Can hear everyone.
Alderman Clemmons.
Hi, I am here, I can hear everybody and I am at home, the only other person here with me is my wife.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tanza.
Present, I'm alone and I can hear everyone, thanks.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone and I can hear you.
Alderman Jaddy.
I'm here, I can hear everything and I'm staying safer at home with my wife.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present and I am alone in the room.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here, I can hear you and I am alone.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm here alone and practicing social distancing.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I'm present, I'm in this room alone. I can hear everyone and I'm practicing social distancing.
Thank you. Alderman Willscher.
I'm here, I am alone and I am practicing social distancing.
We have 13 in attendance.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is Mayor Donches, Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton, Sarah Marchand, Community Development Director and Carrie Skeena, Urban Programs Manager. Communications.
Communication has been received from Lori Willscher, President, regarding calling a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen on October 27th, 2020 at 6:30 PM to discuss affordable housing and from Sarah Marchand, Community Development Director, regarding National Housing Study.
There being no objections, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Presentation, I would like to recognize Director Marchand. And Programs for the Affordable Housing Presentation. Thank you for being here and we appreciate your doing this presentation for us.
Thank you very much. I wanted to just open by saying this is a project that the Mayor supported along with Economic Development and Director Cummings. This was a partnership together on this project and we brought in RKG Associates, who you will meet just shortly, Eric Halverson, who has been a tremendous asset to this process. And so, again, we have worked pretty hard to understand a lot of data here. I know that you got a report over, that's over 80 pages long in your packets. And so Eric is going to run through some of the key highlights of this and then we hope to be able to have a discussion with you afterwards. So Eric, I'm going to turn it over to you to share your screen. If you have any trouble though, I have your back.
Can you see that, Sarah? Okay, everybody can see the presentation? All right.
Yes, you're a little bit quiet, but yes, we can see it.
Great, all right. Hi, everyone, thanks so much for having me this evening and happy to be here in front of all of you to talk, hopefully at a fairly quick and high level about the findings from the Nashua Housing Study that my company RKG Associates has been working on with staff over the last few months. So really excited to be here and to share the findings of the study with you tonight. So just to start off the presentation with a few key considerations that I was hoping you all could keep in mind as we go through this presentation. And as you, if you haven't had a chance to look at the full report yet as you do read that, I think these are kind of our big five takeaways. The first is really around growth and the city's been growing both in its population as well as in its employment base and it's projected to continue that growth over the next 10 years or so. I think the questions around, does the city want to grow? How does it want to grow? And maybe more importantly, where are the key, you know, where are those key questions? And, and you know, some I know are going to be tackled through the city's master plan process sort of around growth as one of our key findings. The second one is around affordability and that's a big challenge and becoming more of a challenge as time goes on. Both rents and sale prices are escalating, have been escalating to a point where some residents are unable to afford it or in some cases they might be forced to pay more for housing than what they probably should. Along with the rising prices, I think it's important to consider how these changes impact those that can't afford to pay more or end up having to maybe move somewhere else, possibly further from the city or outside the city, further away from maybe where they work or maybe where they are going to school or their kids are going to daycare or their existing neighborhoods and networks. So that's an important consideration. We did a deeper dive into downtown because there are very interesting dynamics here with a confluence of development activity, future interest in development and a housing stock that is older and, and sort of as such is just more naturally affordable. It's not necessarily deed restricted affordable, although some of it is. But there is a fair amount of the stock that's just priced below what the average is across the city and we'll talk a little bit more about that. The downtown does have higher concentrations of lower income households. It does have the city's sort of greatest diversity of residents from a racial and ethnic standpoint. And much of the older housing stock is in this area and you know, some of it is in need of some investment. So really thinking through what happens in the downtown, I think should be part of the, the sort of the ongoing master plan I know that just started up. You know, how does downtown change? Where does it change? And maybe more importantly, for whom does it change for? The last one is around leveraging resources and addressing housing opportunities and challenges, as we know, requires resources. In most communities, the resources needed often outpace what is available. So coming up with strategic partnerships and leveraging human and financial capital as much as possible, I think will be important for the city going forward. I chose to arrange the presentation tonight to focus on three issue areas and opportunity areas are sort of combined and select some of the supporting data to kind of tell the story of what we think is going on in Nashua and the different influences that exist within the housing market. So the first issue and opportunity area that I want to talk about is this idea around future growth. So as I mentioned before, population has been growing in Nashua as shown in the figure to the left. So looking forward into the future, the city is projected to add another 8,000 residents if the trends from the last 10 or so years do continue. The interesting piece is actually in the graphic on the right, which is around the age composition of residents in Nashua. So over the last five years, and I'll say the last five years, but by that I mean 2013 to 2018, 2018 being the most recent year that we have census data for. So that's what I mean when I say the last five years. There has been a trend toward a large increase in residents over the age of 55. And in this graph, we compare it to Hillsborough County, which is the orange bars, Nashua is the blue bars. Some of this growth is from residents that are choosing to age in place in the city as they get older and as they move from age cohort to age cohort. But much is actually from an influx of those either nearing retirement age or actually in retirement age. There's also been a growing cohort of those aged 18 to 34. I think that's important to note because those folks may be actually looking for a different housing product than maybe what was traditionally produced in Nashua or available in Nashua over time. Nashua's employment base has also been growing, but as housing prices have continued to rise, it's making it more difficult for the lower wage employees to actually live in the city and a lot of times they end up having to live elsewhere where they can find more affordable housing options. Our analysis showed that about 31% of workers who are currently working in Nashua aren't able to afford the median rent or the median sales price today, never mind if prices continue to increase over time. There's several factors that are driving some of the change in the housing. Think are worth pointing out. The first is that Nashua's adding households at a faster pace than population is actually growing, indicating an increase in smaller one and two-person households. This is a trend that we see in a lot of, a lot of cities around the country where we do work, where because of household formations, our household sizes are getting smaller, people are living longer and people are waiting longer a lot of times to get married or to have families. There's just generally an increase in a need for smaller units. So we're seeing a lot of growth in that one and two-person household. Householders living alone accounted for 37% of the household growth over the last five years. So one in three households that have come into the city over the last five years have been householders living alone. One and two-person households increased by 12% for one-person households and 22% for two-person households. Interestingly, we tried to look at that growth by age sector, the ages of residents. And much of that growth has actually been driven, kind of as I mentioned before, by households aged 65 and older and that's sort of driven by both single-person households as well as married couple households who are aged 65 and older. One of the challenges that we potentially see for accommodating future growth is that nearly 63% of all the residential land acreage in the city is occupied by single-family dwellings, which tend to have lower densities and tend to be more expensive than a lot of other housing types. Right now, single-family homes occupy 63% of that residential land acreage and they account for about 50% of all the housing units in the city. Compare that to the larger-scale multifamily units, which comprise about 4% of the land area, but account for about 18% of the residential units. With the push towards smaller housing units to accommodate growth in the city, the city might want to consider appropriate locations for higher density development over time. You would have the ability to utilize less land in doing that and those units might tend to be smaller in size than your typical single-family home. Adding to the pressure on the housing market in Nashua today from, from both new residents and households is a very, very low vacancy rate. Only about 1.1% of all housing units in Nashua were being actively marketed as for sale or for rent. So typically, when we look at a market, we consider a healthy vacancy rate for both owner-occupied and renter combined to be somewhere between 3% and 5%. Nashua is at about 1.1%. And I just want to point out that this data is also from the latest census from 2018 and I can almost guarantee you that with all the changes since 2018, including the pandemic and the impacts that the pandemic has had, particularly on the for-sale market, I would be fairly certain that Nashua's vacancy rate is probably dip below 1% at this point. So some of this is likely to be eased by the development pipeline, which is projected to add about 615 housing units. And about 60% of those units are in larger multifamily buildings. And this is information that we got from Sarah and her team. You know, a couple of the developments, particularly 159 Temple Street, that's permitted for 168 units. And I'm sure many of you know about the Bronstein Department Partnership that's permitted for about 216 units. So just between those two developments alone, that's, that's a good portion of the development pipeline. But again, those are in much larger multifamily buildings. As I mentioned earlier, Nashua's population is anticipated to grow over the next 10 years by about 8.4%, which means the city may need to produce another 4,800 housing units to accommodate that population growth over time. If the housing split between renter and owner remains as it is today, which is about 54% owner and 46% renter, there could be demand for about 2,500 ownership units and about 2,300 rental units. As prices continue to increase, households earning at or below 50% of the area median income will likely have the most difficult time finding housing. So those households that really need that truly and deeply affordable housing in order to be able to stay in the city at an affordable price and still have money left over at the end of the month or the end of the year for other costs that they may have to incur, that's probably the segment that might, might need the most attention going forward. We also broke down the future housing needs by household size, which can help to inform the size of the units that the city, the housing authority, future developers might want to think about targeting. The city's household composition remain the same as it is today. About 65% of new households would consist of either one or two-person households. That's the table that's shown in the left-hand corner. If household composition continued to change in a similar way to what we've seen over the last five years, the shift would be much more dramatic and really be geared more toward the one and two-person households, which as I mentioned before, have, over the last five years, have been experiencing the most growth and have led to most of the household change that the city seen over the last five years. I would guess that these changes won't be quite as dramatic as the, the table on the right. It will probably be some hybrid of the two. But I think what's important to take away from this is it points to a need for smaller units for households at both the younger age of the resident spectrum as well as the older age. And what I was thinking about earlier was by focusing on the smaller units and having more housing choice in the city, that could also help provide older residents looking to downsize with options for moving out of single-family homes, thereby opening those up for younger households or even families who might be looking to either relocate within the city or locate to the city from other places. The second issue area is around affordability and the financial resources of buyers and renters. In 2018, median household income in Nashua was, was just over $73,000 citywide. The map on the left shows the median income delineated by census block groups across the city. So we can kind of look across the city at different areas and we can see how median household income changes depending on where you are. The lighter the color, the lower the median household income for that block group, the darker the color, the higher the, that median income for that block group. The downtown has some of the lowest median incomes in the city, which we'll discuss a little bit more later. It's also important to note the city, which is the graphic to the right. White households in Nashua have a median income of about two and, almost two and a half times higher than black and Hispanic Latino households, which also has direct impacts on what those households can afford from a housing perspective. Something else to keep in mind as we talk about the downtown a little later on. On the ownership side of the housing market, sales prices and home values are up pretty significantly. Values citywide have increased about 19% over the last 10 years. In 2019, 84% of all the sales in the city were for homes priced above $250,000. And what's interesting is while the sales volume of houses priced over $250,000 accounted for 84% of all the sales, those houses priced at that level or valued at that level of over 250,000 only comprised about 53% of all the houses citywide. So much of the sales activity over the last year, the calendar year of 2019, was really focused on one specific segment of the market, those higher-priced houses. Homes are selling a lot. Average days on market down 81% since 2011 to an average of 10 days on the market. We also did a comparison of new single-family home sales and compared that to the sales of existing homes and found that new homes, so homes that were built and sold in the same year, so a house that was built in 2019, sold in 2019, or built in 2016, sold in 2016. That sale price, the average sale price stayed somewhat consistent at around $400,000, going back all the way to about 2010. But the interesting thing is that the sales of existing homes are up to an average of $322,000 as of 2019. You can see that's the darker blue bars that have been going up and up and up since about 2012. The map on the right shows the sales price activity over the last 10 years and sort of looking at that citywide and what locations in the city are selling for prices higher than other locations. Again, higher-priced housing tends to be located on the edges and in some of the historic areas in the city, while lower price, while lower prices tend to be found in the older neighborhoods, kind of more in the center portion of the city. And it was kind of interesting to see the sale price data correlating with the median household income data as we overlay those on the maps. Rents are also up over 19% over the last five years with the greatest increases seen in units renting from between $1,500 a month and just under $2,000 a month. Some of this is the result of new product coming online in the city, but much is likely attributed to this steady rent increases keeping up with the market over time. So market, but it's also on the renter market. And changes in the renter market tend to disproportionately impact lower-income households as well, particularly in the downtown area where we have those concentrations. So let's just take a minute to talk a little bit about household income and what different households can actually afford from a housing perspective. So this first chart shows households in Nashua broken down by income and it shows how many households are within each category. And we'll refer to these from bottom to top as lower-income tier, modern-income tier and upper-income tier. About 35% of existing households couldn't afford Nashua's median sales price or median gross rent today. 66% of those existing households couldn't afford the median sales price alone. Really that upper income band, those who are earning, say, over $75,000 a year are the ones who can pretty much afford the median rent prices and the, the median sales price for homes in Nashua today. Housing affordability is also looked at from the perspective of HUD programs, you know, federal housing and urban development programs and the income restrictions that those place on housing units. And that's done by a formula to determine basically what a household should pay based on the area median income for your, for the greater Nashua HUD region. So this table shows the percentage of households within each of those income brackets. These actually closely align with the breakdowns that we were just showing on the previous slide. And this information's important as we think about deeply affordable housing, deed-restricted housing and any HUD or city programs that are targeting, that are sort of using targeted programs and using area median income thresholds to target those programs. What we like to do when we think about housing supply and potential demand is to look at any mismatches that we might have between the households in a particular income bracket and then compare that to the number of owner or rental units that are priced to those households. So the graph on the right shows owner households and the units. And as you can see, there's a huge gap between the number of owner households earning over 120% of AMI and the number of units that are technically affordable to those households based on what they can pay for housing costs based on their income. This likely means that higher-income households are purchasing housing that's actually at a lower price than what they could otherwise afford because that's sort of Nashua's market and a lot of the housing units that are coming online, even though those prices have been going up, they're still very affordable to households earning at those top income tiers. And what ends up happening is because those folks who could technically afford to pay a little bit more but might not be able to find housing that's sort of priced to their income range, are ending up having to, what we call buy down. They're probably buying houses that are in the 80% of AMI range and 100% of AMI range. And what happens a lot of times when we see a big gap at the 120% of AMI and above is those households have a really strong ability to compete in the housing market. They have more income, they have the ability to generate a higher down payment, they could potentially pay cash for a house, they have better credit oftentimes. All the things that create competition in the middle of the market end up driving prices up, bringing the vacancy level down and creating, a lot of times end up creating bidding wars. Now, I don't want anybody to walk away from this presentation and say Eric said we should go out and build a whole bunch of $800,000 or $900,000 houses to satisfy, you know, people at the top of the market. But I do think it's important to recognize that there are segments of the market that may not be potentially served to the level that they could be and sort of the impact that that might be having on the housing market. So on the rental side, we see a similar gap in those households over 120% of AMI again because they can afford to pay a lot more than what the market probably has out there in terms of rental units at the top. But we also see a substantial gap for households that are at or below 30% of AMI and that's very typical in most places that we work. This housing tends to be provided by the housing authority or other deed-restricted units that maybe the city creates in partnership with other entities. The gap here is close to 3,000 units, which means many of these households are likely renting units priced above what they should technically be paying, which creates a lot of challenges for those households because they are already very income-strapped. So if they have to pay more for housing, that means they have less money to spend on healthcare, education, childcare, transportation, daily services and needs, all those other services that they, that they need to live their lives. Much of Nashua's housing stock is priced, on the renter side, is priced between that 50% and 80% of AMI band. And so there's a lot of units that are likely not being filled by households in those two bands and are being filled by households at the 30% level and then those who are probably at or above 100%. Again, sort of everybody converging and meeting in the middle of the renter market. And then, as I mentioned earlier, so much of the household change can be tied back to older households, particularly those with earnings above $100,000 a year. Over the last five years alone, close to 1,000 new households were those who were headed by a person or persons over the age of 65 earning over $100,000 a year. Interestingly, those new households were actually split 55% owner and 45% renter. Honestly, I kind of expected the owner percentage to be a bit higher than it was. So it's interesting to see that those older households are actually renting almost as much as they are purchasing. So I, you know, I think the big takeaway here is from the, for older residents, there seems to be demand on both the renter side as well as the ownership side. So lastly, we wanted to take a closer look at the downtown area to see the population, the housing and the development dynamics. So we defined downtown, and this was sort of RKG, RKG's definition of downtown and we talked with city staff about it and sort of explained why we picked this particular definition and boundary. But we defined it generally as the block groups that are going from Route 3 to the west. But we defined it generally as the block groups that are going from Route Three to the west, to the Merrimack River to the east, down to Lake Street to the south, and then so basically to Lock Street to the north. So the map here on the right shows the different types of housing units that are located on each parcel in downtown. And this only shows residential, doesn't show commercial or other. With most of the neighborhoods sort of surrounding what I guess I, I would call is kind of the core of Main Street, those neighborhoods that are surrounding them having mostly one, two, and three unit structures. And then the closer you get to that kind of core, the Main Street core, the more dense the development patterns become. Very typical, you know, of most downtown environments. So I, you know, I don't think Nashua is, it's different than a lot of places that we've worked from that perspective. But we also wanted to look at some of the other dynamics in the downtown. So this map shows the percentage of renter households in those block groups in downtown, just to get a sense of what types of units people are living in today, renter versus owner. And the large majority of the block groups are dominated by renter households. And even as you push out a little further from the core into the surrounding neighborhoods, the block groups rarely have less than fifty percent of the units as rental. As was mentioned before, this also correlates to lower median incomes with downtown having several block groups with median incomes regularly below forty-four thousand dollars on average, compared to the city's median of about seventy-three thousand dollars. So, you know, from our perspective, this places pressure on households to afford those rising housing prices, but also trying to seek out naturally occurring and deed restricted affordable housing that might be located in the downtown area. That ends up playing a really important role here for those households. What we see when we look at the housing stock and the age of the housing stock is an older, typically investor owns building stock in the downtown that's providing that more affordable housing stock as the units may not be as well maintained. They might not be kept updated as, you know, new, new rental units that are coming on the market. They've got all the amenities, they've got all the bells and whistles, these older units tend to not have those. And that ends up keeping rents a little bit lower and a little bit more affordable for those households. You know, as the downtown continues to change and attract private investment as it has been, it's possible that some of those properties could flip and maybe rehab could take place. That could also mean though that as housing prices go up, existing households could potentially be displaced either elsewhere in the city or maybe even have to go outside the city to find housing that's more affordable to their income. The age of the household stock also correlates to the lower assessed building values with about seventy-three percent of all residential structures having an assessed value below two hundred thousand dollars. Citywide, only about fifty-seven percent of residential structures have values below two hundred thousand. But I kind of think it's, it's interesting that many of the buildings in the downtown are, are multifamily or multi-unit structures on the residential side and still have fairly low assessed values where you might expect them to be a bit higher as they have more units and have the ability to generate more income than, say, a single family home that might be located elsewhere in the city. We also mapped sales activity in the downtown. And over the last ten years, ninety-three percent of the sales in this area were below the citywide median. In two thousand nineteen alone, just looking at sales isolated to two thousand nineteen, about eighty percent of the sales were below the citywide median. Again, the fact that many multi-unit properties are not selling for more could speak to the age of the, of the structure as well as the condition of the structure and the units that are, that are within that structure. So I wanted to spend more of my time tonight on the data and the story as I thought that was really important background and context for you all to have. Not only for this study, but I think as, as you all are embarking on the master plan process and are engaging in that process. But I didn't want to skip out on the recommendations piece of it. In our report, the recommendations provided have far more detail than what I thought we would have time for tonight. I was hoping to just provide kind of a higher level overview of each of the recommendations and then turn it over to questions. So the first bucket of recommendations is what we're referring to as planning for success. So this bucket really seeks to leverage the planning work that the city has already done, and there's been a lot of it across the city. And then even what they're about to do, what you're all about to do through the master plan process to really look for those key opportunities to change zoning or rezone areas, find ways to continue the integration of other concepts through that master plan process. I think this is a really great opportunity for the city. The next is finding ways to continue to integrate accessory dwelling units. The city's doing that, but there might be other mechanisms for speeding that process up or making it a little bit easier. One thing that we suggested in our recommendations was a mechanism like pre-approved designs for accessory dwelling units that might make the approval on permitting process faster and easier for the city as well as for the applicant. The next is continuing to look for ways to leverage public land or the disposition of public land for housing production. This could be something like what's happening with Bronstein and using existing public land or buildings to further affordable housing or just housing in general. Could also mean, mean looking at older buildings or excess land that the city might have ownership and control over. And maybe there's the potential for disposition through an RFP process with a focus on some kind of housing. Lastly, educating the public on why housing is such a critical issue to tackle and why it matters to households across the income spectrum is really important. This could help reduce the number of abutter complaints or just general opposition to housing proposals in the city over time. The second bucket is around aligning policy and housing outcomes. There's interest from what we've heard from city staff to create a vehicle for collecting and also deploying housing funds collected by the city through various means. The most common vehicle for that process would be establishing a housing trust fund. The city could collect funds through the trust and then create a process for deploying those funds with goals, targets, metrics to ensure funds are meeting those goals. The funds could then be potentially matched with other federal, state, or local funds to actually sort of leverage that money and have a greater impact on, on housing policy and programs. Sort of interlinked with the housing trust is this idea of updating the inclusionary zoning regulations in the city. We think that the city should revisit the existing inclusionary ordinance and update it and probably expand its reach. Right now, the ordinance is generally tailored to downtown and the TOD areas as we understand it. But there is the opportunity to expand it citywide. You know, the first step that we think in that process would be to hire a consultant who can work closely with city staff to not only rewrite the ordinance, but also to test the financial implications to ensure that whatever is done with the inclusionary ordinance doesn't have a negative impact on development feasibility and have the effect of potentially cooling the development market. So it's really a balance of writing the ordinance in a way that achieves the city's goals and what you're trying to do, but also being cognizant that it could potentially have an impact on development feasibility, so really trying to balance those two. If the ordinance ends up including a payment in WU option, so a fee option, that money could then be used to potentially feed the housing trust fund over time. Lastly, we have the recommendation that the city look at phasing in a rental registry program and inspection process for rental units. The registry component we think is critical to, I think first and foremost, just track and register the rental properties in the city and have a list of contacts just in case issues arise, who can you contact? You know, in case, in case any issues come up. We recommend that the registry fee would be collected annually and that the amount is enough to cover the administration of the program. We think the nexus between those two things is really important. Secondly, and it's probably a much longer term process, the city could phase in an inspection process recognizing that this might require additional staff capacity. Inspections could take place, for example, maybe every three years if tenants turn over during that time period. But if the, if the owner, the landlord is able to keep the same tenant for, say, more than three years, maybe you consider just doing an inspection like every ten years if the tenant remains the same. So it's a little bit less of a list on city staff as well as on the landlord. If it's not being done, you know, every six months, every year, every two years, but there's some, there's some leeway in there. The city should also consider coupling the landlord rehab program or even a loan program with the inspection process just in case issues come up. You want to provide landlords, especially those who might be lower income landlords and might not have cash on hand. You want to be able to give them an option where they could make the, where they could address the issue that comes up, do the rehab and get that tenant, you know, back up and running as quickly as possible, but not have to spend all the money that they have in their bank account to address that issue. The third bucket is around new or expanded programs. The first recommendation is around expanding the rental and owner rehab programs. The city has both programs in place today, but the need for rehabilitation funds appears to be higher than what's typically available in a given year. I think in the downtown, this issue is very present and would likely benefit from improvements to units as well as access to capital. So one change that we were thinking about for, for these programs is considering moving from a zero percent interest loan that's repayable at either the sale or maybe a refinance and changing that to maybe a very low interest rate loan, maybe, maybe it stays zero percent or one percent or two percent. But that, that, there is a requirement for that loan because the interest rate is so low to be paid back over time, so it'll be continuously paid back. This would help to create more of a revolving loan pool instead of depleting the pool each year than having to wait to recycle that money, say, with the new infusion of CDPG money or city funding in its place. And you could potentially tier the interest rate based on the AMI of the owner, whether it's landlord or an owner household. So those who are lower income, maybe it's a zero percent, those who are at a hundred and twenty percent of AMI, maybe it's a two percent loan. The second recommendation is around restarting the first time home buyer program to assist with down payment and or closing costs. That program could be established as a grant and maybe if you were going to target something like a four or five thousand dollar amount, maybe it's just a grant. Or if it's going to be a higher amount, maybe considering a loan that could be forgivable after a certain period of time, typically after the, the person or persons that lived in the households for a set period of time. Or it could even be something that's paid back at little or no interest, similar to what we talked about with the rehab fund. That option would then help to recapitalize that fund over time and make it more, more available throughout the year. And then just quickly on the last side, around leveraging and expanding partnerships. You know, in the housing world, the ability to expand the city's capacity for funding, programming, and education, I think is critical. The city likely can't do all of this alone and finding those partner organizations like banks or employers, philanthropies, community development corporations and others, that could really help expand capacity in many respects. We also recommend continuing that strong partnership with the housing authority and also working with them to look for more opportunities to expand the offering of affordable housing where possible. Two other longer term considerations, the first is what we refer to as a right of first refusal policy where the city could potentially require sales or deed restricted units or buildings that are coming up for sale or maybe even unsubsidized rental units to provide advanced notification of the sale to the city and maybe any of your housing partners. The city or maybe another nonprofit entity could then make an offer to purchase that property. You would probably have to match the highest offer to secure that sale. But there are varying levels of intervention that the city could take, but I think beginning with notification for at least all subsidized properties, ones that are subsidized by other entities as well as those that receive subsidy from the city would be a really good start. You know, those are the ones that are already subsidized, those are the ones you don't want to lose to market rate conversion. Lastly, recognizing you have hospitals in the city who employ a lot of people. I think talking to them about a potential partnership to understand their housing need and see how sort of city resources can be coupled with employer resources and then leverage those together to provide housing or housing options to employees could be beneficial to both parties. But that's likely a longer term strategy. I think there's, there's other things that maybe want to focus on in the shorter term. So that is my overview. Hopefully it didn't go too, too long, I left some time for questions.
Are you looking to take questions, Mr. Halverson?
I'd be happy to, yeah, whatever you all would like to do.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Madam President, I have just a quick question.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you so much. Mr. Overston, in, in all of this information and so on, and I don't know if you could even answer this, but how do we align with like communities in New Hampshire, New England? Is there any kind of a comparison? Are we kind of on track with it? I mean, you talked about our low, low market, in other words, we didn't have a whole lot of inventory and that, that middle of the road group where it seemed like the high income and low income were kind of purchasing those types of housing.
Yeah, great question. I'll just talk sort of in, in generalities, I think the things that I found really interesting and potentially unique about Nashua. Nashua is a growing city and it's growing quite a bit, has been growing quite a bit, I think that makes it unique. I think its position on the Massachusetts border is very unique versus a city that might be further up in New England. I think that is, and has been attracting folks to come in particularly. I, I think from my opinion, and I'd love to hear what you all think, but I think that's part of the, what's driving the older cohort, say, the fifty-five plus residents who might be coming over the border and looking to live in Nashua. I also think Nashua's existing housing stock is very diverse. I drove the whole city, I went in almost every residential neighborhood and development as I was working at the very beginning. And there are just tons of really fascinating housing options that I don't often see in a lot of other places. You can find a gorgeous older single family home, a new single family home, a two family, a three family. There are all these really unique rental complexes, both at the high end and at the low end. I mean, you can kind of find everything in Nashville and I think that makes it really unique. And then on the employment side, you know, the employment base continues to grow and hopefully that will continue in the future for all of you. So that is also sort of putting pressure on that housing market. The, the gaps that we saw at the thirty percent of AMI and the hundred and twenty percent of AMI are not necessarily unique in housing markets that are growing as well as ones that are experiencing fairly rapid price escalation. So I don't think that necessarily makes you unique. But I would say that is a challenge that many, many communities across the country are grappling with is how do we find, how do we find, create, partner to create, whatever it might be, encourage, incentivize housing that sort of matches the income spectrum for the residents who live here.
Thank you.
I have a question as well.
Alderman Lopez.
In your study and your evaluation, did you happen to maybe touch upon information about the employment capacity relative to workforce availability or resources offered in terms of supportive services? I noticed that you were talking about one of the populations moving in being elderly, or not moving in, but the growing population being elderly, which is, is great because it means people are living longer. But also means people likely need more supportive services in terms of in-home care or that kind of stuff. How do you see our economy and our infrastructure as positioned to meet those needs?
Great question, so I'll tackle the employment side first. I didn't have it on my slides, I was trying to trim as best I could, but in the report, I think from remembering it, over the next ten years, one of the fastest growing employment sectors in Nashua, I believe, is in the healthcare and social services industries. So much of what we see around New England and around the country where there is growth in that segment, given that you do have the hospital, some of that is going to go that way. We're seeing such big growth given the aging population for these wraparound services and the in-home, in, in-home care workers that you mentioned. So I do think that that is going to be and continue to be that growing segment of Nashua's employment base or one of them. On the wraparound services, I think that is also a, a great question. So in addition to the in-home care, if there were ways to think about, and this might be maybe more appropriate for the master plan because that will really think about all the kind of elements of what I would call community development. So transportation, open spaces, healthcare, public health, government services, land use and zoning, it sort of brings all those together. I think this would be a really opportune time to think about the location of housing that might be more sought after by those older residents. And then how proximate are those development areas or redevelopment areas to the services that they might need from a support perspective?
I appreciate that answer. I, I wish you had a little bit more of a, of a plan for us, but I guess we have to do the actual planning part because that's been something of the struggle that I've seen downtown, this is Alderman for this particular area, is nonprofits basically have to compete for for-profits in order to get space. And they, they provide due to New Hampshire's bizarre, I mean, unique tax structure. They provide the majority of supportive services or wraparound services. So we've seen a lot of change, growth and, and decline of services over the years. So I just, I'm curious as to whether we have enough volume or infrastructure to meet current need versus expansion need. When you had pointed out that Nashua may be needing to add like an additional four thousand plus units over the next couple of years, I'm imagining that would be accompanied by a tremendous amount of, of those wraparound services.
Can I jump in here too? I, I think that some of these new units, and just as Eric was just describing, you know, it's really important to remember that we also have a lot of growth in our eighteen to thirty-four. And the location of how And the location of housing, the same analysis Eric was just talking about for maybe some of our seniors also aligns very significantly with what is attractive to our 18 to 34. So, you know, what we have seen already is they're competing for the same product and the same stock, but that are, that are older generations, right? They have cash on hand. They've sold a house and they're out competing. And so I don't want to get too lost in setting up housing for, only for our aging population that doesn't also accommodate our workforce because that's incredibly important. And also, if we look at our aging population and we go past 2030 to 2040, there's a very steep decline. And if we age restrict too much, we're going to be in big trouble the following decade. And so I think it's really important to kind of keep in mind that we're looking at the same product.
So keeping that in mind, have you found that there's any kind of an increase or a lack of capacity in wraparound services for individuals that are in the 18 to 23 range?
This isn't an employment study. It's a housing study. So I do think you're bringing up a really good point. I think it's a very great, it's a very important thing for us to be addressing as part of the master plan. And as we get into phase two, we're really going to dive into employment and the economy. And I think these are great points for that, but that they aren't something that was covered in any detail with this housing study.
Okay. Were there specific amenities that we can ask questions on?
Anything to do with housing.
If I may.
We might have different expectations of what people need to manage housing then.
If I may, Alderman Lopez, could you kind of define what you mean by amenities? Just so I have a better sense.
I was thinking of core amenities for people in order to maintain their housing. For example, maintaining a clean and safe environment, having proximity to places that can, they can feed themselves or seek medical care, those kind of things. But again, that doesn't look like it's the focus here. So I was wondering what constitutes a need to put it downtown?
I mean, I guess when we were looking at the downtown, you know, I think on the, from the perspective of the lower-income households, I think many of the things, Alderman Lopez, that you mentioned are probably things that those folks are looking for in addition to transportation, potentially to jobs, especially if they're located in the city and if they don't have a personal vehicle that they have access to. For the 18 to 34-year-old population, I do agree with what Sarah said about the alignment of preferences for sort of more active living downtown environments. So I think that is 100% true. I think what those folks are looking for is probably a bit different. They're probably looking for nightlife. They're probably looking for in-building amenities such as, you know, a pet washing spa or doggy daycare or covered parking, in-home Wi-Fi and really good internet service, cable packages, in-unit laundry, elevator buildings, those kinds of things. And when I was doing a review of different apartment complexes in the city, it seemed like the newer developments, like Rivers Edge, for example, that has so many of the new amenities that I think the younger folks are looking for. But I also think that the older residents are also looking for very similar amenities as well. I don't know if that helps answer the question or not.
I think I just was looking for more of an understanding of what, where, what areas are we going to see friction between the two populations? Because then you'd start to diverge.
I see.
I know.
I mean, I think downtown is probably the answer, at least from my perspective. I think that the growth potential in the downtown, especially the potential to accommodate, I think, greater density in the core, has the potential to, you know, those units are likely to come with higher price points, whether it's a renter unit or it's a condo unit. And what you might see is that the new investment could then start to trickle out into some of the neighborhoods that have your older units that are your sort of naturally occurring affordable units, but not necessarily de-restricted. And if those prices start to creep up and people start to invest in those units, on one hand, that's a good thing because they're investing in the units. On the other hand, if they put that money in, they're likely going to want to get that money out of it, either through rent or sale. So I just think that that's something that, just to consider as new investment takes place in downtown, sort of balancing new investment, which on one hand is terrific, with trying to maintain some level of affordability in the downtown as well as taking the affordable housing approach and also putting it out into other growth districts around the city, which I'm sure will be also identified throughout the master plan, where some of that future growth is and the ability to apply inclusionary housing or inclusionary zoning to some other places to spread out affordable housing around the city.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I did notice you also made reference to the racial and economic disparity as well, which I think is going to be important for us to consider.
Yes.
Y'all set, Alderman Lopez?
Yep.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. And this is a question to Mr. Halverson. Thank you. Excellent presentation. But in your studies and going around to different other type of communities, I saw that you had listed some of our older structures were built around 1930. I think several predate that as well. And some of them have maybe perhaps not been gently lived in or lovingly taken care of. So to that vein and looking at the master plan in mind, does your company have a rule-of-thum number in looking at some of these properties, when the point of investing into that and then looking to replace them or coming up with some alternative program to come up with a more community-type of style on the same footprint and to getting into affordable housing?
Yeah, great question. So in the full report, and I didn't have time to talk about it tonight, but the city staff had asked us to take a look at all of the residential units around the city. I think we focused mostly on one, two, and three unit structures and look at the age of each of the housing structures and try to figure out, just kind of rule of thumb, what the potential rehabilitation needs might be citywide for older structures. And our cutoff for that was anything built prior to 1979. The reason we use that is that's about a 40-year lifespan. And typically, you're building structures for like 40 to 50 years here in the United States. Unlike many other countries around the world, we build these structures and we maintain them for, you know, 150 years in some cases, which in some respects is great to preserve the architecture and the history. In other respects, it's kind of a rehabilitation nightmare when you buy it and you got to put a bunch of money into it. But anyway, we use 1979 as a cutoff for that, both for the sort of lifespan of the structure. But maybe even more importantly, that aligns with when lead paint regulations came out sort of after 1979. So from a rehab standpoint, and you know, I'm sure Carrie can speak to this as well, the city has a really robust lead paint remediation program. Many cities around the country that have CDBG funds do. So we use that as our cutoff for the rehab analysis.
So I think one of the critical pieces of this, if you get into the report, is with the recommendations, is being able to use some, maybe the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or some other mechanism with our rental rehab program to, as we invest and rehab units, that we add that long-term affordability clause to them to try and help balance the rehabilitation without of properties without necessarily losing affordability. And so I think that there's some good tools that Eric suggested about how to balance some of those reinvestments in our community while also not losing the affordable housing that exists.
Any other Alderman have any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Halverson, Director Marshawn, Director Cummings, for your presentation this evening. We do have our next meeting in about three minutes. So thank you very much for being here and we appreciate your input on this, on this great study.
Thank you all so much.
Excuse me, Madam President?
Yes.
Are we taking questions from the public tonight?
No, this was a presentation to the board tonight.
I see.
And the public is welcome to, you know, send along any questions they might have. And I'm sure we'll be happy to get them answered.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the October 27, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Would the court please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Catherine.
Yes.
Alderman Milcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and 0 nays.
And we are adjourned at 7:31 PM and our regular meeting will start in a minute. Thank you, everyone.